Thank you for joining us at the June 16th edition of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners meeting. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the common who stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd also like to state that this meeting is being recorded. First on the agenda, welcome to new board member, Jana DeShane. Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Excited to be here.
Excited to have you. Anyone on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm first I'd like to welcome Jana DeShane to the board. Jana, I talked to her on the phone, ran a great campaign. She ran a positive campaign. She attempted to, I saw some screenshots, answer questions from citizens. She's informative. She's been on the finance board. She understands where we're at. And I certainly congratulate her on her victory. And I congratulate everybody who ran, whether they won or lost. It's not easy putting your name out there. We do have some new faces on different boards. And just a, I think it was a good day for Dudley. I think Jana's going to be a great fit over here. And 20 years from now, she can say, what was I getting myself into? But congratulations.
Might come sooner. And congratulations to you as well, Mr. Sullivan, on your 12th reelection. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the reorganization of the board. Yeah, we do this every year after an election. We move things around. We generally all don't stay in the same place. We rotate. What's the board's pleasure on reorganization?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
If I may. After my 12 elections, whatever you want. There's always been different little traditions are happening. So, once upon a time, it was selectmen who was going to his, their last year before the reelection, and it was person who received the most votes. And sometimes it was somebody two years in a row. But at this time, I would like to recognize Jana and her skills and offer her the position of chair if she so desires.
Thank you so much. I would like to politely decline. I want to get my sea legs first, I think, before I consider anything like that. But I do really appreciate it, and it's an honor.
Mr. Chairman.
Good call. And before you go, Mr. Sullivan, I just want to state for the record that I have no interest in holding any position, chair, vice chair, or clerk. Just in case.
I was going to be next. Well, as I said, Mr. Landry, if he so desires, will be up for reelection. He was the lead vote getter when he got in. And if he would so desire, Mr. Chair, I offer Mark Landry nomination for chair.
Mr. Landry, what are your thoughts, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to politely decline as well.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Sullivan for chairman.
Mr. Sullivan, your thoughts?
I'll accept.
Thank you. Do we need a motion and a second on that?
We need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on Mr. Sullivan being chair? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, we have vice chair. What is the board's thoughts on vice chair?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
If he would so be inclined, I know you said you want, you have no interest. I believe Mr. Johnson has no interest. Jana already spoke. I wholeheartedly offer Mr. Landry to be the vice chairman.
Mr. Landry, thoughts?
I accept, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Mr. Landry being vice chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next, we have clerk. We have clerk.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
I know she said she wanted to get her feet wet, and this would be excellent spot because we very rarely need a clerk to run a meeting, but it does happen. So if Mrs. DeShane would be so inclined, I offer her a name and nomination for clerk of the board.
Jana, your thoughts?
I accept. I accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. This would be good. There's a lot of reading out loud during this. So this will be good to get your feet wet. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. So with the board being reorganized to a new chair, vice chair, and clerk, just like we did in volleyball in high school, we will rotate to new places.
I'm just looking to see where you were going, and I'm going to the other place.
The other place.
We're on the way. So last night you have to do this. This is very strange. Since I've been in the middle. We good?
Great.
Next up on the agenda, number two, citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to be heard on an issue that does not require a vote of the board?
Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, sorry. That's right, I got the wrong one. My, my, I feel bad. I'm sorry, minutes. Approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Executive session minutes. To approve and release the executive session minutes of June 3rd.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'd like to abstain. I wasn't
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the board for the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry.
401, my bad. Executive session minutes. Approve and release the executive session minutes of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Landry, multiple seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 401. Next up, resignation. Resignation of Bob Tuttle from the Conservation Commission effective June 17, 2024, which happens to be today. Is Mr. Tuttle present? He is not. Chair, obtain a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Bob Tuttle.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, multiple seconds. Mr. Ruder, excuse me, Mr. Ruder, on behalf of the board, could we craft a letter for either my signature or yours to thank him for his service? And do they have, do they have an alternate in conservation?
Might be.
There may be an alternate. If not, people pay attention to the social media of the town. There may be an opening. Next up, we have an appointment. Cultural Council, Virginia DiDonato. Is Jenny here? Do not see her. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Jenny DiDonato, Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by, I mean, Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion?
I just want to disclose, not that it matters, but she is my aunt. So we are related.
Oh, nice.
But I, I know she's very passionate about the Cultural Council. I'm glad to see that she's back on board.
Nice.
Coming back.
Jenny certainly needs no introduction in town. She's life, life member of the community, and she's out there. She's active. Mr. Chair, Mr. Administrator, I don't see a conflict with unpaid position.
No. I think we can go ahead and go on that.
Perfect.
Motion and a second to appoint Jenny DiDonato to the Cultural Council. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Reappointments. Under Section A, we'll do them all as one group because they're one-year terms. The term to expire is 6/30/2025. Would the clerk like to read the names that are into the record?
Barely, sorry. You want me to start with the position and then?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Burial agent, Mark Bartel. CM RPC delegate, William Trefoni. Chief Procurement Officer, Jonathan Ruda. COA Director, Deborah Johnson. Electrical Inspector, Neil Piasta. Electrical, Assistant Electrical Inspector, James Jones, Jr., and Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Jay Spall.
So, to the group, I know I asked for the grouping of names, but I'm going to ask that the burial agent be voted separately because I am employed there. So we'll do the other six people. Chair, obtain a motion to appoint the other six names as read.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siggenevich, seconded by Mr. Landry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Burial agent, Mark Bartel.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Landry, seconded by Ms. Siggenevich. Any further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
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 Nay. Abstention one, 401. Section B, three-year terms.
Okay, we have Cultural Council, Louise Williams, Annette Geon, Ronald Stalak. That is not right.
Stalak.
Stalak, thank you. Ronald Stalak. Council on Aging, Catherine, Catherine Deroche, Kathleen Cormier, Charlene Marlborough. Conservation Commission, Jorge Slingo, Francis Mul-
Micalajek.
Micalajek, thank you. Samantha Costello, James Kobe, and Economic Development Committee, Todd Donahue, Ricky Bowden, Jonathan Andrew Levitch. Historical Commission, Frederick Meyer, John Morazek. Recreation Commission, Jennifer Conoyer. Building Commissioner, Zoning Official, Nelson Burlingame. Capital Improvement and Planning Committee, George Petrinos, and Michael Mayott.
So, I have a note here that Charlene Marlborough does not want to be reappointed to Council on Aging. So we will take her out of the motion. And is there a motion as amended, list as amended, for appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chairman, I think we usually have a capital improvement member from the Board of Selectmen as well.
We do. We do.
And I think that's up in June.
Yes, it's up in June?
Yes.
We'll have that on the next agenda.
Next agenda, okay.
Without objection to it, Mr. Chairman, we had an alternate for dispatch, for the Board of Directors for dispatch. Mr. Marcy was your alternate?
Bring it up next meeting.
Yeah.
We can bring up a full appointment, too.
Full appointment, and probably a resignation from FAA as well.
Okay. All right, so we'll handle those on the next one. Motion and a second, as amended, to delete Charlie Marlborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Abstention none. 5-0. Sorry, folks, I had a different agenda on my computer. Now we'll go to citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to be heard with something that is not on the agenda, that does not require a vote of the board? Seeing none. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've mentioned it a few times, but now the EV charging stations are up and running at the town hall in the rear of the building. These charging stations are entirely grant-funded, the same as the charging stations are installed about a year ago at the library. And I wanted to publicly update the Board of Selectmen as to how the charging stations work, because there's been some input from the public and some misnomers that need to be corrected, and who actually pays for them. The charging stations require payment from the users to dispense electricity to charge electric vehicles, similar to when we, we take a standard vehicle to a gas station, and we use our debit card or Apple Pay, or whatever the case may be. So, and I wanted to also give an example as how a transaction will go. The electric vehicle is plugged, an actual transaction that just happened recently, an electric vehicle was plugged in on June 4th from 4:42 to 7:22 PM to recharge. The charge cost the owner $7.17. The town service fee was 72 cents, and it took 15 kilowatts of energy. The total cost for the town was $3.12. The customer cost was $7.17. So the adjusted net profit to the town was $4.05. So we, we got these through a grant, we make a little bit of money on it, and it goes into a revolving fund that was recently approved at the town meeting. And that revolving fund is used for energy expenses or to maintain new stations, whatever the case may be. There's about 500 bucks in them right now. So those are up and running. We don't pay the electric, we pay the initial electric bill, but we make, we almost double our profit on the, on the EV charging stations. And there's two at the library, and there's two here. Just to clear it up.
Oh, excellent. I mean, it was, again, some scuttlebutt out there that, why is the town doing this? And what was the benefit? Well, the benefit is, people that have electric vehicles can come and charge. And it costs the town $0. Let's go.
Correct. Well, it was, there was a few thousand dollars, and they netted out, but it'll be a gain in the end. We're making, we're doubling our money every time somebody charges. The park grant application, speaking of scuttlebutt, is nearing completion for the playground. And that's the application that we've been talking about for some time. That's the, the grant that we're now eligible for because we went through the redoing our open space plan and becoming, putting ourselves in a position of being eligible for grant funding for things like the playground. So, it has a due date of July 5th, and it will be submitted prior to then. Tomorrow, I'm going to meet with the Recreation Commission. And as the board recalls, the community voted on the renderings that were on display in the foyer of the town hall last year. They were, they were up for a few months, and everybody had a chance to take a look at those renderings and cast their vote as to what they liked. And then, I think last month, we had a public hearing, well, a public, public input session with the designer and residents, parents, kids. They all came, and they voted on what sort of play items they wanted it to see incorporated into the design and so forth. So having completed the work on the design, and based on a large amount of public feedback from parents and kids, I'm going to turn that over to the Recreation Commission. I think I've done my part to this stage. The next part, of course, will be procurement, but I would, I think the Recreation Commission is better suited to take over the, the project from here.
Excellent. I think the, I think we have a couple of active members of the Rec. Commission right here. And I think when they finish up that paperwork, that's going to be a tremendous asset to the town, and we can put the comments and put to bed the issues people think we have out there, and we'll have a fun, fun zone again. Anybody have any comments to the administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to comment on what a great job he's done getting this put together to the point where the Rec. Commission can take over, and we can get the process started. And I think everybody's going to be looking forward to the end date on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And as usual, it's the planner, and Michelle is very heavily involved in that. I'm glad to see she's on the Rec. Commission, and will continue to be involved in that project and help carry it forward. And finally, Mass DOT, I saved the best news for last. Mass DOT has identified some serious deficiencies of the bridge, which is more like a culvert, on Sawmill Road. And the Highway Department is prioritizing this, I believe. MJ is contacting the town engineer to get a better understanding as to what we're looking at. However, it will need to be addressed to avoid closure of the road. So we're going to have to find a source of funding to make those repairs after we find out what the repairs will cost. And again, that's part of that, that bridge inspection program that happens. And it's not, it's not closed, but we have to move on it pretty soon. And that's it for my report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Started off well. Any questions or comments to the administrator? Mr. Siggenevich?
Yes. Is, is that the culvert, like right, like maybe 100 yards from Charlton Road, right there?
It's right on the bottom. I saw it down there. It was over at that, that block.
Kind of by Lakeview?
Yeah, it's along the lake here, right on the water.
Okay, so it's not the creek coming from Peter Pond. It's the one further up?
Yeah, it's one further up. It's two, it's two five-foot diameter pipes.
I was hoping it was the one closer to Charlton Road. That's a little smaller and...
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we'll have more public discussion about that when I have some, and MJ has some facts to present to the board and to the public.
Anybody else with a question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, do we have a timeframe?
Not yet. Be the answer.
The timeframe that was given to me, Mr. Landry, was soon, in the, in Mass dot letter.
Okay.
The town needs to act soon to avoid closure of Sawmill Road on that end.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson.
Do you want a motion to accept the town administrator's report?
We're done with their questions and concerns. Motion to accept.
Motion to accept the town administrator's report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, again, multiple seconds.
Stereo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Abstain? Unanimous. Public business. Here, you did the first. Oh, paper, sorry. Let me go again. Let me turn this thing off. Licenses. Common Victual License, SEMA Subshop, LLC, DBA Subway, located 157 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. Manager, Mayank Patel.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the second time we've had this on the agenda, and both times they haven't showed.
Are they no show, no call?
I called him, and his voicemail was full, and I don't have an email.
I'm going to make a motion that we decline this application.
Yep.
And they can resubmit at a later time when they're ready. I'm hesitant. When someone fills out an application and then doesn't follow through, I'm not sure what's going on. Maybe they changed their minds. Who knows? Who knows? But I'm going to make a motion we decline that application.
I'll take a second. I'll second if a discussion to the administrators, is that the proper avenue? We, we should just officially decline it and make them go through the process? Because I'm in, I'm in agreement with Kerry.
Well, we can decline the act on it, sure. There's, there's, and they can reapply if they need to.
So they have to...
I think that's a reasonable, we, this is the second time, right?
Right. No show, no call.
Mr. Chairman, this isn't like town meeting when something's turned down, there's an X amount of time before they can come back. They can come back in a week, a month, one hour. Correct?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's all. I just, I just don't want this to come up every week, every meeting, every meeting. And it's...
No, I agree. So we have a motion and a second?
And one more point of discussion, just for the record, this is the second meeting. I'm just going to say it again, Mr. Siggenevich. Second meeting that that application has been presented. Second time they haven't shown up to discuss that application, or to give the board the opportunity to discuss that application with them.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, so I heard the phone number, and the voicemail was full. Is there any written communication?
No.
Nailing? No?
His address is the store, the shop.
Okay.
On the application.
And I've been in the office through the chair when Michelle has spoken to him over the counter. the counter and told him to come in. The application is pending.
So, Mr. -- myself, I would like to take, you know, Kerry starts one step further, and I think the town, they've been a good neighbor, our board, try to, I think we no longer have an obligation to try to contact these folks. I mean, it's up to them now. If they want to go forward, we shouldn't...
Yeah, I'm not sure where the disconnect is at this point.
Disconnect is, they're going to have to come and reconnect. Everybody good with that?
Mr. Chair, do we at least let them know that they've been declined and why, and what their process is to follow up?
I mean, if you think we should send a letter to the adversary, maybe certify, get a receipt pack to prove that they either got it or declined, they could decline the letter. Yeah, sign it certified. Mr. Johnson?
The Chair, it appears there's a communication issue.
Yes?
That would probably be the next escalation.
Yeah, send them a certified letter to them, they have to restart their private word. You guys know what you're doing. So we have a motion and a second to notify Subway, DBA, SEMA Sub Shop LLC, located at 157 West Main, that they are no longer considered in the regular licensing process, they have to restart. I said that correctly. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. Next up, licenses. B, indoor entertainment license, Whiskey Rocks Inc., located 4 Airport Road, Dudley, Mass. They're looking for one pool table, five video games. Manager, Jessica Valby. Is Jessica present?
Jessica Valby.
Yep, you can come to the table if you want, or the podium. If you can just kindly state your name for the record, and I know I just announced what you're here for, but you can just tell us.
Jessica Valby with Whiskey Rocks for the, I guess it's an amendment to the Common Vic for the addition of one pool table and five video games.
So let's start off just with asking, Michelle, is the paperwork all in order?
Give me the application, yep.
Now, are there comments or questions from board members? Mr. Siggenavich, anything?
Yeah, what anticipated start date? When do you anticipate having these?
They are in place currently.
Oh. How long have they been in place?
The end of May. They were installed.
Further questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Is this, Mr. Chairman, anything?
No.
So they were installed, but they weren't being used, right, obviously?
Correct. We've used them personally to try them out.
Yeah, but yeah, not the public.
No, we're getting pretty good at Topco.
So, any questions from the public? Anybody here with questions from the public? Seeing none. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to approve the indoor entertainment license for Whiskey Rocks at 4 Airport Road, Dudley, Mass, for one pool table and five video games.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Landry. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, 5-0. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, the public business. We have year-end transfers.
Mr. Chair, this is a list of transfers put together by department heads in our accounting department, which requires a vote by the Board of Selectmen, ratification by the FAA to move some money at the end of the year into accounts that may be close to or have been overspent from accounts that will not, will have excess money at the conclusion of the fiscal year. And I'll send the list down to you, Mr. Chairman.
Glad we handed it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Yeah, I need to take a thought.
Gosh.
Your feedback.
Yeah, for real. Okay, so, take it from the top?
Yep.
All right. We're looking at year-end transfers, starting with, from account number 0013205650, the Bay Path assessment of $1,726.50 to account number 0012205240, fire preventative maintenance. From the same account, Bay Path assessment, $43,866.18 to fire overtime. Again, from the same account, Bay Path assessment, $10,000 to DMC West Main Street, the amount of $10,000. From, again, the same account, Bay Path assessment, $10,000 to account number 0011235310, legal. From the same account, Bay Path assessment, $671.32 to account number 001225710, fire career education incentive. From account number 0011455940, Webster Dispatch assessment, $344.82 to account number 0012205710, fire career education incentive. From account 0012405110, the Board of Health agent salary, $2,242.98 to account number 00... Did I skip one? I did. Sorry. Let me go back. So, from account number 0011455940, Webster Dispatch assessment, $3,313.43 to account number 00011235706, vacation buyback. Now, from account number 00012405110, the Board of Health agent salary, $2,242.98 to account number 00011235706, vacation buyback. From the same account, Board of Health agent salary, $14,000 to account number 00011235705, operating expenses. From the same account, Board of Health agent salary, $4,505.83 to account number 00012205700, fire department expenses. From the same account, Board of Health agent salary, $7,251.19 to account number 00012205150, fire fill-in labor and per diem. From account number 00011415113, assessor clerk, $10,000 to account number 00012205150, again, to fire fill-in labor and per diem. 0014205120, highway mechanic, $15,000 to the same account for fire fill-in labor and per diem. From account 00100014205110, highway superintendent, $4,777 to 00012205150, fire fill-in labor and per diem. And then, from account 00014205123, highway truck driver slash laborer, $11,857.16 to the same account, fire fill-in labor and per diem. And then finally, from account 00014205123, highway truck driver slash laborer, $5,000 to 00011235748, HR expenses, for a total of $1,044,556.41.
Any questions or comments on the proposed transfers?
Johnson. Through the chair, could the Town Administrator explain how this works and its part of the budgeting process?
You have the floor, Mr. Administrator.
Just to explain some of the money that's coming out of salary accounts. For example, a health agent was hired in November, and the, of course, it was fully funded for the year beginning July 1st. The same with some of the highway positions as well. In a lot of cases, people weren't hired until halfway through the year, or at least three or four months into the year. What happens at the end of the year is that money that is appropriated at a town meeting, if it is not spent as we approach the end of the year, which is June 30th for our fiscal year, we use that money and transfer it here, and it's ratified by the FAA as well to cover accounts that may have run a negative balance as we get close to closing the end of the year. So, for an example, if a fire, like, one of the fire line items, if there was a piece of equipment that broke down and needed a major repair, and that budget was running short, we would take money from an available account and move it over to cover the bill. All bills have to be paid by June 30th, but we have to wait until October to appropriate it at a town meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Any further questions to the Administrator? Comments from the public? Scott Zakowski.
Scott Zakowski, Catherine Street. Forgive me for asking, but all of those, it seems like all of the receiving accounts were from one department in the town. Almost all of them, if not all of them. They were all for the fire department. They had a budget. What happened? It seems like this happens every year, that they, that the budget runs over, and it's just transfer money to supplement. It just seems to be, you know, we vote a budget, and it seems to be every year that it has to be supplemented. Just curious.
Can you have the fire?
Well, fire would be for me to take the fire chief's thunder away from them. But when Mr. Zakowski is right, we do appropriate a budget at town meeting, and we're working within that appropriation right now. A supplemental budget is something that we look at in October, where actually adding money that hadn't been appropriated before.
Well, if you remember, good evening.
Dean Kopecowski.
We had some issues last July and August. I had one shift where, because of the layoffs, there was one guy on shift. Can't run a department on one guy. You have to respond to all the calls. I went up, I spent over a third of my overtime budget in the first two months of the fiscal year last year because of the override problems we had until it passed. So that was about 48 hours of overtime or more for eight straight weeks. And then, in the spring, we've had a number of major repairs to three different vehicles down there, and that, I went through two-thirds of my, more than two-thirds of my fire expense budget, just paying for repairs on trucks, which I'm obligated to repair according to Mass general law, plus all the other things we have to pay for on an annual basis. So that's the reason we went over.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also add that we're still going to be running a surplus of over $100,000?
$100,000.
Of money that was unspent and not moved into any other department line item. So we actually finished ahead of the game this year.
I just have a question. If sewer water could come back up for a minute. Scott, how do you guys handle your budget? You must have unexpected costs. You just slide line item money around, or is every single, every single item, line item in your budget spot on every year? There's no emergency?
Well, actually, we're going to talk about a little, a little bit further down the agenda. Well, no, we do move expenses from account to account if we have to, but as long as you don't move salary to expenses, or expenses to salary, you do that with, every department does that within their budget.
I was just wondering.
That's, that's, you know, you, the expenses, expenses pay for expenses, and salary pays for salary.
I was just wondering, because you made, mentioned that you felt that we do this every year for the fire department, but you just said every department does it.
We, we're not moving anything from one department to another. It's all within the same department.
No, you said every department moves things in their budget, but you just said we do this every year for the fire department. I just didn't, it didn't seem like it was a fair representation, that's all. If every department does it...
I was asking what, what happened that the budget blew...
Right, but you also said that we do this every year for the fire department.
It seems like every year, there's a large amount of money that's moved to the fire department budget. I'm just asking.
No, no.
Just asking for clarity.
That's why I was asking what you guys do with your budget, that's all. You move, you move things around also.
Within...
Right.
We're not move, we don't move money from water to sewer, or sewer to water. We can't do that.
You're also an enterprise fund, we're not...
We're not allowed to do that.
Correct, or you're enterprise.
Right.
Right, okay. I just wanted to, I just had a question, that's all. Thank you. Any further comments or questions on the year-end transfers? Hearing none. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to accept the year-end transfers, as read.
Want to just put the amount in the motion, just for clarity? 144?
It was 144 even, sorry.
144, 556, 41. Yeah, we'll just include the amount.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second multiple times. All in favor, state aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. See if I can find my agenda again. I'll do the paperwork. Next up, fire department. Dean Kopecowski, Fire Chief, EMS Director for the town. Good gentleman, will you can just state his name?
Yeah, before I start, I'd just like to introduce Kevin Filczak. He's our MEMA representative for our town in the, in the region, so...
So, Mr. Chair, Kevin Filczak, with Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. I am what they call a local coordinator, and I'm your direct representative to the state during states of emergency or any kind of large-scale incident.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I just wanted to read, read this. This was a, this is an update of our emergency management plan, which is online at mema.gov on Web EOC. This'll be the third time we've updated this since I've been chief here. Kevin and I have been working on this version for the last year and a half. We just need you to sign off on it. He'll give a brief overview. But, "A primary role of government is to provide for the safety and welfare of citizens. The welfare and safety of citizens is never more threatened during times of disaster and other serious emergencies. A goal of emergency management is to ensure that effective multidisciplinary and multi-jurisdictional mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery plans exist so that the public welfare and safety are preserved. The Town of Dudley Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, SEMP, provides a framework for a community-wide emergency management system to ensure a coordinated response to emergencies and a coordinated support of certain pre-planned events. The SEMP addresses the roles and responsibilities of all community departments, agencies, government organizations, volunteers, and community partners that may be involved in a response operations, and identifies how regional, state, federal, and private sector and other resources may be activated to address disasters and emergencies in the community." Just an example of this, back in October 2013, when we had the October snowstorm, we had opened up the shelter at the middle school for a week. That was an example of a seamless emergency management operation. We provided heat, shelter, showers, food through the American Red Cross, and we utilized our shelter trailer for bedding. I can't remember, it was about 40 or 50 people we provided sheltering for during that snowstorm. So the program's worked, and with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, and he's just going to give a brief overview of the base plan and a spreadsheet of, like, critical infrastructure in town and hazardous places in town and some evacuation routes.
So, very briefly, a SEMP plan, or Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, which is what's on the screen here, it, you obviously know your seal, but it is... on the screen here, it, you obviously know your seal, but it is a document that explains how your town will respond to an incident. It's not a play-by-play. This is very much a fifty-thousand-foot overview of how you will respond to an incident. It really delves into what are the roles of town administrator, or the roles of the fire chief, what is the town going to do, or how is the town going to set up its overall response structure? That's really what it's delving into. It's not going to give you, what is the operational plan for how we're going to respond to an incident at the school. It's not meant to do that. It is meant to give you that base plan. There is no requirement in Massachusetts that you have this. However, and I do big asterisk, or a big emphasis, it is best practice nationwide that you have one of these plans. If something were to happen, and you don't have one of these, one of the first questions is, well, where's your plan? And if you don't have one, then that's not a good answer to have. So the base plan is a fairly lengthy document. I won't go through it, chapter and verse, unless you would like me to.
Hit the high points.
Hit the high points. In general, you're going to be looking at, we're going to be in this document describing, you know, what are some of the general structure, or what are the risks that could impact Dudley? What are the things that could harm Dudley? Where are those, where are the important pieces of infrastructure in your town that you need to maintain and keep up? You know, we need to keep our schools safe. We need to keep our senior centers safe. These are at-risk populations, or what we would refer to as those with access and functional needs. We're going to talk about the different, what is Dudley going to do during the different phases of emergency management. In this, you're going to adopt what we call the National Incident Management System, or NIMS, and Incident Command System, ICS, which are, again, national standards that every response department follows from here to Alaska. So you're saying that we're going to adopt the same model. You're going to talk about different, how you're going to set up your EOC, Emergency Operations Center, what are the goals of the EOC, you're going to talk about how you're going to staff it, you're going to go into where are our shelters, where are our points of distribution, i.e., where if you had to hand out commodities to your population, say, water or tarpsin, depending on the emergency, where those sites are, how you evacuate the town. It's going to get into the overall roles and responsibilities of you, the town, what the state does, what your regional partners will do, what the federal government will do, nonprofit. It's going to get into the nitty-gritty of what each department head, or what each department, I should say, will do during, before, during, and after an emergency, what they have to do. And once you adopt this, this is what they will follow. It's also going to get into the line of succession. So if, for whatever reason, the chief cannot do his job, or is away, who would fill into that role? Who would fill in to be the next Emergency Management Director? We'll talk about how are you going to collect information, and how are you going to disseminate. So, when, when you're getting reports of a massive fire, how are you getting that information, vetting it, and then pushing it back out to your citizens, so they know what they need to do to be safe? We're talking just what your communication capabilities are. It gets into admin, finance, logistics. Obviously, everything comes back to how do we pay for it in the end? So, how does that look? How do you preserve records? How are you going to work on your training, so that you can continuously update your plans, and make sure that everyone is up to, up to the correct skill set? Just plan development and maintenance. And then there's a number of annexes, which are more checklists for anyone who's going to be stepping into the, into that EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. If, you know, for, Mr. Chair, if you're, if you're walking in there, and you haven't been in the EOC in a long time, these are just the checklists that I can give you, and say, here's what your role is in this, or here's what you have to do, sitting in here for the first time. So it just takes some of the stress out.
Funny you mention that, because I was chairman in 2013. I remember going to the fire department. I had to sign declarations, because I was chair, to get the ball rolling. And I also utilized the middle school, because I had no power for over a week.
Yes. And unfortunately, we're going to, we will always see that. It's not if, it's when. So, hopefully, fingers crossed, it's not anytime very soon.
Well, I'm chairman, next year it can happen.
Well, you're still in my area, so let's keep going a couple years past that. But, but that is what this document is. And then, at the end, there is a spreadsheet that the chief has worked on with me, that is more of a full detail of, of all the critical sites in Dudley, and I can show you that. This, for your knowledge, is Web EOC. So, Web EOC is the online platform that we use to communicate with towns during incidents. It's a nationally-used platform. Every state does it all differently. Massachusetts, every town has the ability to put in, put critical files into this online platform. This is kind of our way to say, yes, Chuck, you have a plan. Dudley's, if I can pull it up. When we're looking to build this up, but we have your base plan here, we have your survey that you've completed on community point of distribution, so again, if you had to hand out commodities, I can pull this up, but it's, it's basically an Excel sheet of, this is where our school is. This is where X, Y, Z facility is.
Yeah, and the hazardous materials, it shows like Shields Packaging, Gentex, those companies.
So, what we're here to, or what I'm here advocating with the chief is the adoption of this plan, because again, it is something that is, while not a requirement, it is absolutely best practice nationwide to have an adopted plan. And by having an adopted plan, you can then build off of it and add more complex, more tactical plans, for lack of a better phrase.
And I don't know if, did you bring up the evacuation routes?
I can, momentarily.
Just, you don't have to bring it up, but it shows in, like, things like that, the evacuation routes will be on there, things of that nature. The EOC, I saw that at the end. Everybody's aware that that's the fire department now. So say, a storm wiped out town hall, the administrator, the accountant, the treasurer, tax collector, the assessor, they can all go up to the fire station, plug all their stuff in in the training room, put their petitions up, and essentially run the town from there.
So to be clear, this is a plan we already have in place. We just have to update it.
Yes.
It's not something that's just coming out of.
No. So what you, what you're signing tonight, I've, I actually said it at the beginning of the presentation. I think you signed it the first time I did it. It was around 2012, 2013, and I think we did it, updated it one other time in between.
I just ask you to reaffirm that, because, again, this has been a point of contention in the social media world, that is Dudley really prepared? We've had this process in place for well over a decade.
Yeah, we, thirteen years, pri, even prior to me, so I'd say the last fifteen or twenty years, so. And we've been on top of it. We've had plenty of events, four or five events since I've been chief here, to prove it. It's worked. Most of our, our disasters were weather-related, and we came out on the good side of things every time, or as good as it can be.
Correct.
And it was thanks partially to this plan, so. And the other thing we're working on, I just thought I'd bring it up, is our continuity of operations plan. There's some things I got to disseminate to the department heads to fill out, but that's also being worked on. And we just recently updated that. We're just finishing that up. And that kind of goes along with this, but it's a little different.
So, Chief, if I could.
Sure.
So a continuity of operations plan is, in essence, when something happens, let's take a hypothetical incident, say, global pandemic, hypothetically, and people are unable to perform their job. So, the town administrator's out, for whatever reason, or the chief is out, or you don't have a full board to take action. This is the town's plan, how we're going to make sure we continue to provide those essential services and essential functions to the residents of Dudley. That's really what this plan does. And it highlights, this is where we maintain our official documents, is where our primary documents are. This is how we maintain them, this is how, what redundancies we have to ensure that critical items are, are preserved. If we have to go buy new equipment, because the town hall were to become inoperable for a period of time, here's where we could go and purchase those, those items. And this is what the items that we would need to purchase are, based on what we're using currently.
Excellent.
One other thing, just on Web EOC, it was utilized during COVID. That's how I ordered a lot of my supplies, masks and gowns and things like that, when they were difficult to get. Back in the beginning of the pandemic, I'd put a request in, and, you know, either Kevin or someone else would send it through, and then we'd get a delivery from somewhere.
Again, this is already online. We can post the link.
Yes, there, there is some parts that the public can view, but there's other parts that the public can't view, because it's considered sensitive information. I mean, and there's certain things you don't want to be giving people, to the general public.
So if I could, a SEMP plan, a base plan in and of itself is a fairly generic document, in the sense that there's not a ton of damaging information in it, because I'm telling you, in this plan, here's our census data for our population. Here is, are the critical facilities, and for the most part, those are publicly available. I can ask the chief for the tier-two reports and hazmat reports. I can redact certain information, like cellphone numbers of that, you know, things that are sensitive to that nature. That's for the base plan. As we develop more plans, we were talking beforehand about, like, say, a school security plan. That one is a completely different conversation, because that one is a full tactical plan that can be protected, versus this base plan, which I could FOIA it, and I would provide it. But again, there's nothing in here that is innately controversial, I should say, for lack of a better phrase.
Mr. Chairman, an example of that might be something that we would, we can talk about at a high level, and not so much get down into the weeds on, is our cybersecurity plan. As the board recalls, we hired a cybersecurity expert four or five years ago. They came up with a public-facing plan, and the board received a briefing about what our actual vulnerabilities are, and what needs to be addressed. So you wouldn't want to necessarily broadcast a deficiency in your network to the world. That's, that's an example of where we try to be as transparent as possible. We want to, we want to be smart about, you know, offering information publicly.
But there's a chief touch on. We have to balance the needs of the knowledge and the information against critical staffing, or critical responses to incidents. And a perfect example, too, is we all just got a phishing email scam, right? That cybersecurity caught that. That was last week, right? Came up. So, cybersecurity, I don't know if it went to everybody in, got hit with some kind of phishing email, was, they stopped it right before it could get to us.
What I can say, Mr. Chairman, is we're in a lot better shape, from a network standpoint and from a website standpoint, than we were five years ago. We've, we've zero to a hundred in five, over the course of five years.
Thank you.
Like, like Mr. Filczak said, and Mr. Ruda said, those items are sensitive. They'd still be on Web EOC, but they'd be restricted to just myself and key personnel, with a base plan, that the general public could look at the base plan.
Right. Because as he stated, if you're not available, someone has to be able to access it.
Right. And Web EOC is a, is a password-protected thing that, site that only Dudley, for your, for your particular file, Dudley and MEMA has access to. So it is sensitive and secure.
Excellent. Any questions for Kevin, or Fire Chief, Fire EMS Director?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick. Now, this, we can update when needed, to keep it specific and tight for the Town of Dudley. And nationwide, having this is the best practice.
Yes.
You've got to be prepared.
Yes.
We, we know what the five Ps are, and so we have to be prepared. And I think this is fantastic. It's, it's been here for about fifteen years or so, in that we're continuously updating it, so no one's in the dark when our leaves get together and something bad happens.
And like I said, it, there's been perfect examples of it being put to use during my thirteen years here, and even prior. We've had a number of storms, winter storms, hurricanes.
Tornado.
Tornado, where it was all utilized. And you brought up the tornado. I didn't even think of that. We went door-to-door for that, no, whole neighborhood, and checked on everybody in a fairly short amount of time. So, I mean, all of it's been put to good use already in real-world happenings.
This can be used for any size incident, so it can be used for anything as large as a tornado, or it could be something smaller, like your, your fire at the tier-two facility a couple, like, year and a half ago.
Maze.
Yeah. Or it can be used for your holiday event. I mean, this is a universally applicable plan.
Excellent. Any board members? Mrs. Sigunovich?
No, I'm good. This is good information.
Anybody from the public? Any questions? So what kind of motion do we need, Mr. Administrator? Just to accept the updated plan? Is that you got it written ready?
I, I just need the chairman to sign it. I didn't put your name on it, because I knew you, it just says chairman of the board of selectmen, because I knew you were reorganizing the board tonight.
We don't need a vote. We just, we just accept it?
Yeah, and I just need a signature. If you want to vote, they would probably be good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the plan after review, and sign it. Take any other action relative thereto?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Johnson. Again, any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention five-zero. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, I just wanted to, we just wanted to bring up one thing. We had a pamphlet that MEMA sent out to us, and this is on MEMA.gov, I mean, excuse me, mass.gov/mema. And this is just preparedness tips for summer hazards. And it's just, we got this heat emergency coming up. It just tells you how to take care during summer storms, such as tornadoes, and how to be aware before extreme heat takes over, or you have a medical incident. It's just a little toolkit that's good for the public.
We provided this directly to our emergency management directors, under the idea that this is something you can share on your social media pages as well, so that you can better help the mass, mass.gov/mema. But that would be just something to think about, just making sure to help people be prepared. There's a number of scenarios in here, hurricanes, tornadoes, extreme weather. So, just food for thought as well.
Excellent. We will have that link posted for people at home that want to click on it, and see the public portion.
Mr. Chair, while everybody's signing, there was a question I saw come across about the CERT team. Maybe the fire chief can tell us what the CERT team is and what they do? Chief? Can you, there was a question that came up from the public about the CERT team. Could you just, while this, just give us a brief overview of what the CERT team's function is, who makes up the CERT team?
The CERT team is volunteers. We, we've been utilizing CERT through TriEpic, which is the Regional Local Planning Commission. It has five towns, I believe. Nine? When did they expand to nine? But anyway, nine towns, I guess I've been informed, it's been updated. But, and we've been training our CERT people through that, so it's a regional CERT team. So what they do is they're volunteers, like, if we have a storm or something, and the police are overwhelmed, or fire department's overwhelmed, and they want to serve, like, we used them during the shelter to serve food, and look after the elderly people that were up at the shelter during the October snowstorm. But if the tornado came through, and the police were overwhelmed, you could use them for traffic control during, you know, for downed trees and things like that. They can serve coffee, things of that nature. But we have a few town members. Debbie, were you on, you were on that, weren't you? No, the CERT team, weren't you? Yeah, and we have a few other members, but it was Dudley, Chalton Webster.
Sturbridge, Southbridge, Oxford.
And there was a couple new ones that just joined. Actually.
Auburn.
My deputy chief, Paul Konchny, is the, is the chairman of TriEpic.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I also run the, for MEMA, I run the CERT teams in Worcester County. So, for anyone interested, CERT is a, it's a twenty-hour training course, and we teach you everything from basic fire safety, how to use a fire extinguisher, basic medical care. We teach basic search and rescue, light search and rescue, and basic terrorism awareness, all things to give you that bit of a taste of what you can do. And that is usually, by most departments, supplemented, as the chief was saying, with additional trainings. most departments supplemented, as the chief was saying, with additional trainings from police and fire to just make them more of a force multiplier for you and your community. And it's tailored usually to your community. Tri-Epic is very good with sheltering. That's kind of their bread and butter. But I have other teams that are very good at, you know, standing up firefighter rehab. It runs the gamut.
Like I said, I appreciate your efforts. It certainly seems like we're up to speed. You folks are on top of what we need to be on top of.
Yeah, just while I'm up here, so I don't have to come back up. And a couple times, we just started working on updating our hazard mitigation plan. I've been emailing back and forth. The town administrator's been in those emails. We're working with CMR PC to update the hazard mitigation plan. In fact, I've got to update all the damn stuff, what we've done. And I've got to send the spreadsheet back to her, but we're working on updating that as well, which, oh, that's more infrastructure things, but it still plays into the whole emergency management realm.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just let Kevin take his equipment back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Next up on the Public Business C, Water Sewer Commission, the discussions if needed regarding electricity contracts and providers.
So Scott Zakowski is now a member of the Water Sewer Commission. Just as clarity, I asked that question earlier simply to, for an explanation as to why the budget was over. That's all. The chief gave a very good, clear answer. That's, that's just, you know, why did it go over? In any case, a number of months ago, the Water and Sewer Commission was very evident that we were not going to stay within budget for electricity. At this point, I believe, we're, we've spent over $200,000 on electricity this year, which is over the budget of, between the two departments, of about $175,000. It's a pretty significant expense for electricity. We have to spend it. We have, we need the electricity to run our pumps. So it became evident that we weren't going to make budget. And one of our members, Justin Dolan, took it, took the bull by the horns and started exploring ways to save on our electric bill. Went to a broker to see if we could get a better rate. We got some better rates. Looked like we could save about 25%. Pretty significant. He then worked with the town administrator and was able to, I believe they were able to get Constellation, who is our current provider. In order to go to the broker, we would have had to break the contract with Constellation. So I believe that through, Justin worked with the town administrator and the representatives of Constellation to get a better rate. I received an email earlier this week that we are, we're going to realize some savings. Hopefully they're as good as we were hoping. But in any case, and I believe those savings will also extend to the, to the town as well. It won't be just the water sewer. Am I correct? So everyone, everyone is going to realize some savings there. And I know it's really, there was no need to bring it up here. We were, wanted to discuss more, but they were able to negotiate that with Constellation. So we're going to realize, hopefully realize some significant savings this year.
Mr. Sigonevich?
You mentioned everyone will see some savings. I have to ask, will the rates be coming down?
Oh, for water rates?
Yes, water, water sewer rates. Will they be coming down?
There were other things as well that dictate rates. But if there's a chance that we can lower rates, we will lower rates. I pay the same rates as everyone else. I don't want to pay any more than I have to.
Well, I know.
So we will, every year in the March, April, May time period, we look at our rates, look at our bills, look at what we have to do to keep the department running. And we set a rate, we have public hearings, and we set a rate based on that.
I'm just asking.
I tell you, I would, I would relish the chance to have a rate, a rate hearing and lower the rates. Absolutely, just like anyone else.
I had to ask because when you say everyone will realize the savings.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about municipal expenses for this building, for the water sewer buildings, for the school, for the fire station, for anyone else who's in that, in that account, that group of accounts. It won't, I don't believe it has anything to do with residential rates.
So, to the administrator, weren't we already in a group hearing, a group pricing with Constellation on our municipal things? And is this rate better than what we had?
This rate is part of Constellation. Speaking with Commissioner Dolan on behalf of the Water Sewer Commissioners, they expressed an interest in coming over to Constellation because it was, the Constellation lowest rate was the lowest rate essentially that they could get as well. So just to explain the way it works is, the MMA, which is the Mass Municipal Association, negotiates with different direct power distributors. Constellation is one of them to give, they essentially negotiate the best price for municipalities. So we generally start looking there first. When I came in, we switched from another provider, which was also a direct energy provider, but Constellation had a slightly better rate. And I think this is the second contract that I've done with Constellation. We were locked in for two years, and it was, and it comes up in November of this year for a new contract. But we started having these discussions and started having them in April and May in anticipation for the November deadline, so we can start looking at the market. And we had already started going down the road as well. But what we have, what we found out is, we were locked in at 16 cents per kilowatt, and that was just around the start of COVID. And as everybody remembers last, not this past one, maybe the one before that, remember when National Grid was telling everybody, you know, stand by for 26 cents per kilowatt? The town was locked in at 16. In addition to being locked in at 16, we were able to apply solar credits, which we purchased at less than 16 a kilowatt hour. So we were realizing pretty good savings at that point. I think what the commissioners realized was they weren't getting, did you, were you on a separate, your 24 accounts were not part of the town accounts. And I think that's probably what spurred all this forward. But now we've been able to bring water and sewer onto Constellation. At the rate that they shot their on for, we were able to match that rate. And we have a blended rate until the next meter reading, which is in November. And that will bring us right down to 12 cents per kilowatt. And we're going to lock in for 24 months at the most. You can lock into up to four or five years, but it's a presidential election here. So you have one candidate who's heavy on one type of energy, another candidate who's the exact opposite of another type of energy. So we don't really want to lock in for more than 24 months at 16, at 12 cents.
So if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we were already locked in at a lower rate than they were. So they, you said 24 accounts were not part of the package that we had signed.
Correct.
So they went out.
Looking for a better rate.
Ended up coming back to us or you with Constellation, who we already used.
Correct.
So the newer rate that you're referring to, is that based on them going out and shopping or us already being a Constellation member?
Well, we were, the town was already, has been having conversations since April with Constellation because we do that well in advance of the, of the contract expiring because they want to try to lock us in at the best price. And it's literally day to day. So every day that goes by, like, it's going to be really hot this coming week. So the price today was more than it was on Friday to get locked into. So you're really kind of shopping around. So, I mean, I commend the commissioners for bringing this to my attention, looking for a better rate. It certainly shows good stewardship, and we were able to work, you know, collaboratively and get, and get the best rate with 12 cents per kilowatt.
So now does that impact the community rate that we've been working on with?
So that, and this, it does get confusing because that's municipal aggregation.
Correct. That's separate.
Which is, which is separate. That's, that's what the residents get as opposed to the municipality. The Constellation is the municipal provider. It's our street lights. It's the lights in this building, the lights for the water and sewer pumps and all that kind of stuff. It doesn't extend out. But as you know, we're working on, we're working very hard to get that rolled out to the community so they can, they can, you know, shop around and get their best rate. The difference is the people in the community, the residents, who are able to get the best rate can opt out at any time. The town has to lock in for a period of time to avoid, you know, being out of contract and having to pay a penalty. So we try to do it for no more than a year or two at a time, depending on what's going to happen next.
So are we still waiting for state approval of our application?
For the aggregate, for the residents.
For the residents. Okay, because that came up recently, too, that we weren't.
That's stuck in.
Ball doesn't drop, but we're still.
Mr. Marcy's all over it, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't want to put him on the spot. Any further questions for Mr. Zakowski or the administrator? Nothing from the right? Anything from the left? So we, no action. It's just strictly informative.
Strictly informative.
I'm glad you guys saved us some money.
Justin, Justin Dolan and the town administrator worked together to try to get the best rate we can get.
Excellent.
If we can go down from 16 to 12, that's fantastic.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Departmental communications. I'll start with Chief Carlo. It's been pretty quiet tonight. Soft-spoken guy, anyway.
Just a quick reminder, Strawberry Festival this Thursday, we're going to block off one of the lanes on Center Road like we always do, so it's going to be one-way. Please don't park where it's going to be, no parking signage, and have a safe festival.
Thank you, chief. Chief Koczenowski, Fire and EMS. Good. Superintendent Gatski.
Just want to remind everybody, we're still working on the rail trail. There's been a lot of people coming down there when we're working, and I don't want anybody to get hurt. So just want to remind everybody.
So the guys out there, too, doing some cutting and some maintenance work out there.
Yeah. So we're trying to gravel the sides and stuff. So we were working down there today. Probably four or five people came down. I just don't want anybody getting ran over.
Yeah. Thank you. Water Sewer, Mr. Petrinos.
Just want to thank everybody who came to our ribbon-cutting ceremony last week at the Water Treatment Center. It was a great success, and everybody had a good time and got to see exactly what was going on in there. So, thank you.
And she's not a department head, but I'm going to ask Michelle at her last meeting, anything you have to offer from HR or from the assistant town administrator's chair? Nothing? Excellent. So I think I'm going to, before board member comments, I'm going to call up State Rep Marcy to come up. I believe he has a, several citations he'd like to hand out.
Do. Is this the, I have a couple things today. First of all, thank you for having me. Kind of weird to be on this side of the table for a change. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Jana. I know you'll do a great job. Let me get settled here. The first one. So we have, I got an email from Mast DEP. And, you know, as George just mentioned, you know, we just had a ribbon-cutting on our PFAS plant that, you know, we all had a hand on. It was great to see that. Dudley's far ahead of the curve. Someone was there and said that when we were handed lemons, we made lemonade, and we saw lemonade and get a ribbon-cutting. So, and this is sort of tied into that. But this is from the Central Regional Office of DEP. I'll read what they had. It's, "Regional recognition. The Dudley Water Treatment Department has been very proactive ever since 2019, and through the help of consultants and the support of the people at Dudley, Mast DEP has been able to approve activation of Dudley's new wells, blending of wells, rehabilitation of tanks, a new well field, pump station upgrades, replacing AC mains, newly installed raw water transmission main, and approval of a centralized treatment plant for PFAS." And they also went on to say, "George Petrinos, Dudley superintendent, should be commended for all of his hard work, the state revolving funds, and the zero drinking water permitting staff to get the Dudley Water Department into a very competent place." So they had an event out at East, and they had asked me to, you know, provide them a citation. And I said, "You know what? I'd rather take this home and do it here," so more people could see it. So have a little something. Oh, thank you. And I'm going to read it. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, House of Representatives, "Be it hereby known to all that Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the Dudley Water Department in recognition of your Public Water System Award received by the U.S. EPA, Mast DEP, and the New England Waterworks Association. Entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given the 17th day of June 2024, signed by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano and me, John Marcy." So George, I'd like to present this to you and your, and your team. You're doing a great job.
Good. Good. I thought that were easy. Get up here.
Debbie's here.
I can have to look that easy, George. You know, well, George is coming up. This ties into, we had Mary Jude here a couple of years ago from Mast DEP. And even at that point, George was way ahead of the curve, and we really appreciate his efforts.
Thank you. All right.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Marcy to stay up while he's up there, and I believe he may have another.
I do. Wait, there's more. This one might not have been on your agenda, but, you know, there's been a lot of last meetings lately, and I had one. And now it's time for Michelle to have hers. And, you know, having worked alongside you and on the board for so many years, I saw how much you do for the board. But not only that, but above and beyond, and all the other departments that you help. You know, you just show up at meetings and help, and you do all this community outreach stuff at Christmas time and Halloween time. And Dudley is, was very, very, very lucky to have you all these years, Michelle. And, you know, we owe you a debt of gratitude. So I have a citation for you as well. And I want to read it to you. I'm very, very proud to give this to you. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Michelle Jervis in recognition of your dedicated service for your nearly 20 years to the town of Dudley. Entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given the 17th day of June 2024 by Ron Mariano, Speaker of the House, and me, John Marcy." And I would like you to come to the State House for an official tour. You, and maybe Olivia can drive you there. I know you don't like driving to Boston, but I'd love to host you there to show you around the living museum. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for all you did.
Before we do a picture, John, and you hand her a certificate, the town also has one that I'm honored to read on behalf of the board, the town, all employees, and all the residents of Dudley. The Town of Dudley, Massachusetts Board of Selectmen, public service citation. Be it known that on behalf of the people of Dudley, we now recognize Michelle Jervis in recognition of and with gratitude for her skill, patience, and exemplary work ethic over nearly 20 years of full-time service and volunteerism to the town of Dudley. You have set the bar for those that follow. Given under our hands this 17th day of June in the year of 2024, Kerry Sigonevich, Chairman, Mark Landry, Clerk, Stephen Sullivan, Selectman, Jason Johnson, Selectman, Jana DeShane, Selectman. Michelle, thank you very much. I know you want to do this, Michelle. Have John come up. We'll do the pictures.
How about the department heads, too? That'd be a nice picture.
Yeah. All department heads, anybody, Tom, who wants to come up? Yeah, all department heads, anybody on the floor who wants to come up?
You're not shimmying out of this photo.
George, you, you're included. Bring your citation with you, George.
You can stand wise if you want.
Michelle, you can give your hugs out after, you can come around. John came to block me. No. You've missed out for us. George, squeeze right in.
I just get right in there, we're all good.
We'll figure it out, George.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you.
I had my eyes closed.
Four times.
Speech by Michelle might be in order?
Yeah, Michelle, if you want to go to the table, you can. If you want to sit in your chair, you can, if you don't want to say anything.
This is a big surprise, thank you. I didn't expect anything. I, I love my job, I love working for the town. I loved my selectmen for all the years I've worked for you guys, for so many different selectmen over the years. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for you. And especially John, he's the best. You can't get a better TA or boss. And I will miss everyone, thank you.
Well, Michelle, that was very nice. I'm going to go first before I ask the rest of the board. I think I'm the last one that participated in the interview process, when Michelle came up in the second floor. I, I say with a couple, well, quick story. We, we rank candidates, like we always do for every job. And we sat down, five of us at the time, independent evaluation of Michelle's skillset, of what Michelle had already brought to the second floor when she worked in the Assessors' Office. And her score at the time, the difference between Michelle as the number-one candidate was greater than the combined score of the second and third candidate. That's how, even back then, Michelle was already shining for the town of Dudley. I tell people, I've appointed a lot of people to jobs in this town, a lot of folks sitting here have gone through committees that I've been on. And I'd be hard-pressed to find someone that I've appointed that has done a better job, that gives this town, you can't get more than a hundred percent. I know people say I give a hundred and ten. You couldn't find anyone, everyone's a great worker, you can't find anyone that has done more, given more, and been critical to this town than Michelle. And I wish her nothing but the best in her semi-retirement. She has beautiful grand children, we show pictures all the time, and she gets some time now, she can just not worry about coming in here, she can go spend some more time with those grandbabies. But thank you, Michelle, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Open up to anybody else. Mr. Singenevich.
Intangibles. You can't put what you do on a job description. I mean, just looking out for us, fix my collar. I, I know that sounds like nothing, but you actually care, and that's hard to find. You're not robotic. You care about what you do, you care about the people you work with, you care about the people you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeShane's.
I, congratulations.
Thank you.
Like, whatever comes next is, is going to be wonderful, I'm sure. And I am a little bummed that I don't get to know you so well in this role, but I have to say thank you for being so warm and welcoming. When I was first appointed to FAA, you were one of the first faces I saw when I came in, and, and it really made it feel so much more accessible. And I think that's just your way with people. So I hope that wherever you go next, to whatever adventures you get into, other people get to see that, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Landry.
Michelle, what can I say? With the many, many, many hats you wear, you still found the time to take care of us and Mr. Rudin. And you never let us down. You always made sure we're going straight north where we needed to be. And that, I thank you very much, and only wish you the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
From the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much. Enjoy it all. Don't think twice about, what, the cats in the box, or what was the term the other day? We're good because you've put us in a great place. Thank you.
Mr. Rudin.
So Kerry actually means what he said, because every time we talk, every time we've talked about you since he's been a member of the Board of Selectmen, he talks about the intangibles. When we, when we advertised your position, we discussed the job description. How do you put in the job description the fact that the town administrator comes into work every day and doesn't have to worry about things that he forgot five minutes after you told me about it? Because he's going to, I know you're going to tell me ten more times to take care of something. Michelle was the one who gave me my transition, because my predecessor wasn't available to do that. And she's going to be very difficult, she's going to be a hard act to follow. And I think the person following her in that act is aware of that as well. No pressure. But, but I'm, I have it on good authority, she's going to come back part-time and help us out with that transition, and help us get through the next year or so, until she's had enough of me and everyone else. Hopefully that doesn't happen anytime soon, though.
Good thing now is she can say, "I'm not coming in tomorrow if I don't want to."
All right. Not coming in.
No, when you go part-time, you say, "I'm not coming in."
And how many times have we told her, "Put in for comp time, for God's sakes, what are we doing?"
You want to get me going? I can recall a previous administrator, we had the board. Is that thing updated? Or am I going to get, no, you're going to get to it now. Michelle, take, take your time, take what you have coming to you. Oh, I will, Sully, don't worry. I hope you did.
So some of those end-of-year transfers are for retirements, and the, the town is getting a deal, because she's leaving time on the table, because she's so dedicated and done so much for this town.
She always does. She always does. I'll give you time to tell you to go home early. Come in on a Friday, twelve o'clock, Michelle will just leave. No, I got to just finish this. Can I tell the story about the scanner, then we'll, then we'll let you go. One last story. So, one of our previous administrators, who shall be named nameless, Michelle needed a scanner. We didn't have, twenty-first century, the town didn't have a copy of scanner. I go, "Michelle, what do you mean, we don't have a scanner?" She goes, "Well, you know, so-and-so." I go, "What do you want?" She goes, "Well, funny you ask." I go over to her computer, she opens up a window, "It's right here, I've been holding it." "Let's order it, Michelle." "Really? They can order a scanner?" You might have thought we found a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. We raced into the twenty-first century with a scanner. So Michelle was always looking for ways to do her job better, do it well, so you're going to be sorely missed, Michelle. Sorely missed.
A savvy one.
So usually we go around the table for Board Member comments, but I'm going to go first tonight, only because I just want to make sure I recognize the job that Kerry Singenevich did as Chairman last year. Kerry took over at a tough time. I think I kind of took us through the beginnings of COVID. Kerry kind of came in after. Kerry was Chairman during the budget discussions last year, the overrides, the budget that was changing almost weekly, as Mr. Rudin can, I don't want to guess the itinerations, but we were in the twenties when it came to different budget itinerations. Kerry was the Chairman, and yes, we all took some, and still take some, criticism from the public, much, much of it unwarranted because of the way things were actually run around here. But Kerry was a steady hand on the helm last year. And I, I don't think it's fair to let that go. Underappreciated, Kerry. You really did a tremendous job last year, trying to keep everybody on point between people coming to meetings with questions, or people putting stuff out in, in the world that wasn't true, or half true. And I think you really did a great job. And, and you know, the town owes you a debt of gratitude as well. I mean, you put your name on the finance board, you're a selectman, I know you're not going anywhere yet. You were the Chair, you did a tremendous job, and I want to make sure I recognize that. I didn't want to do it at the beginning of the meeting, I wanted to do it at, to put a selectman comment, so. I tell you, I know I got a tough act to follow, and you did a great job, Kerry. You can walk out with your head held high, and now you get to sit over there and rabble-rouse.
The Paul Joseph seat caused trouble. Thank you, you too, Mr. Sullivan.
So I'm going to go left or right, so Kerry can take us to the promised land. Mr. Johnson, you're up.
So it's a busy summer, Strawberry Festival, and a lot of activities. Please get out there and enjoy all the good stuff that goes on in town. Thanks to Laurie Smith and our whole team for organizing another successful transfer of power. You know, people stepped up and ran, just like our, our new board member. It's, it's the way things work, and it worked so smooth, or if it, if it didn't, she made it look smooth.
Yeah, we didn't hear about it.
So, you know, thank you to all.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, you and Jana, great job. I know you're going to do a lot of great work. We have people retiring, people coming onboard to fill those shoes in different areas. And I'd like to say, great job to the people leaving. We'll have another meeting to go over stuff like that. But the new people coming in, you got your work cut out for you, but you'll do it, you'll make it happen. And I look forward to working with all of you, thank you.
Mr. DeShane's.
I just want to thank the rest of the board for such a warm welcome. This has been great, so far it's only been a week, so there's that. But I'm, I'm really looking forward to getting to work with you all, and to, you know, give back to the voters that, you know, supported me and put me here. I obviously couldn't have done that without them. So hopefully I will rise to the occasion and to all of their expectations, and, and this will be just a positive couple of years coming down the line. But thank you, thank you all again.
Excellent. Mr. Singenevich, take us to the promised land.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Feels kind of weird to be off to the right and not in the middle. Yeah, so I've got a little energy left at the end. There's a couple of things I'd like to bring up, if I may.
You have the floor.
I, I, I think one of the reasons I was elected initially was because of, I mean, we all have our departments, and the financial aspect is kind of mine. And, and I know this isn't budget season, per se, right now, but I, I think we've all learned that we have a revenue problem here in town. Not so much spending, that school, that school formula from the State House really isn't kind to us, but we do have a revenue problem. So, Mr. Chair, if you would be so kind as to request, either from the town administrator or we could do this later at a meeting? I, I know we have a cannabis license in town, and it doesn't, granted, and it doesn't look like a business is open there. If we could reach out to them and see, like I said, we need to maximize revenue. If they've changed their mind, or if they're running behind schedule, something. I know during the campaign, a lot was said about business development. I, I don't think that should just be a couple-week discussion. I know when I ran, I talked about it, too, but as you see, you, you sit on the board, and other things come up, and you get distracted, and you forget about it. I'm not distracted, so I'm going to speak about it. The other thing, our existing cannabis place, I remember there was a big proposal, how many jobs, how fast it was growing. If we could find out what's going on there, there seems to be for lease signs. Maybe they could work with the Economic Development Commission, something, to, to get tenants in there. Maybe we can start putting things on, on the website, what's available for business property in town. Also Stevens Mill, what's going on? Hope isn't a strategy. Right now, we're all just hoping. Hoping the backhoe and construction starts there, but we don't know. We should find that out. I'm not saying all like, you know, chop, chop, tomorrow, nine AM, let's go, but I, I think we should start the process, because if we don't start the process, something else is going to come up and get our attention. And finally, I, I feel this is the six-hundred-pound gorilla in the corner of the room. This is 2024, it's not 1924. I, I generally think of myself as an old-fashioned guy, I really am. But the voters elected a woman to this board, a very capable, intelligent woman. Yet the name still remains Selectman. I think we should explore that. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do anything, I'm saying we should explore it. I don't know if that's a town meeting vote, I don't know if that's an us vote, I don't know if that's legislative, I have no clue. But I think we should talk about it. That's it, I'm done, thank you.
I think some excellent points by Kerry, and, again, not right away, but we should have the second cannabis license, maybe, I know you contact them at least once a month, if not more, the mill people. According to people that, oh, we're losing a rather large automobile business in town, apparently, they're moving. I mean, if we could just maybe get some of these ducks in a row, like Kerry said, and we can look at the other issue also. I mean, we've had female members in the past, but, I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to any kind of reconstituting our name, if it goes on our stationary, that we send out letters, and I have no problem with Select Board, if that's what so desires. I mean, I think that's an excellent idea, and things like that should be explored.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we are working on Stevens Mill, and we're getting close to getting another update, which Mr. Singenevich rightfully is impatient for, as am I. But we also have Mr. Representative Marcy working with our state senator as well, to talk about some more historic credits being released. And the developer is actually working through my office with the legislative delegation. Is, I think the last email I sent to Mr. Marcy was this morning, and he responded to it. So we're on it, and we're going to have an update really soon. It's, it's obvious that the finance rates aren't where they should be, and it's not the best time to be putting a huge investment into something, but there's other things that I think need to be reported out, and we certainly will get that together and move on that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd just like to clarify for a moment, that wasn't a ding towards anyone, and I just want to make sure that wasn't.
Oh, no, no, I didn't take it as a ding.
That was, hey, we got work to do.
Yeah.
We, not, that wasn't a ding, I just wanted to make sure.
And I didn't, I certainly didn't take it as a ding.
No, and the Stevens Leonard people have always been, Camden Properties has always been upfront with us, they've been actively engaged. When we ask them for an update, we get it. Like I said, I know, you and I have talked many times, I know you stay engaged with them. And this would be a good time, if State's going to release some historical credits, maybe we have them come in and say, "This is the problem." You know, if it's rates, if it's supply chain, but we're looking at this for a date, you know, they can give us a tentative.
We'll get, we'll get a, as comprehensive of a report together as we can.
Yeah. I'd like to recognize, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and, and I think that it's a bylaw change for Select Board. I can, I'll find out more about that as well.
No, I mean, just something from the radar. I'm going to recognize State Rep. Marcy to finish this off, and then we're going to adjourn.
Yeah, real quick, to answer Mr. Singenevich's question, so I've been in contact with Jonathan, you know, and, and the developer, you know, and Senator Fatman's office. The next step is reaching out to the Secretary of State's office to talk about said historical tax credits, to see if we can shake some of those loose. We have another project in Selberg that we're doing that for, too. So it's a, it's a good time for an update there, you know, wheels of government, you know, it's, you know how this works. And then, since the House has already done their housing bond bill, we have the Economic Development Bond Bill coming up in a couple of weeks, and then the Senate is going to have their, their turn, too. So Senator Fatman and I are working really closely together to try to find a, trying to get this unstuck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At that point, at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Stereo.
By acclamation, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks, thank you everyone for coming in.